Just light it up, whatever. Called to order the, what was it?
November.
Yeah, November. I'm looking for it, sorry, it's just not refreshing here. November, Chaska City Planning Commission. Roll call, please.
Bobby?
Here.
Cross?
Here.
Dulkey?
Here.
Kelly? Keyport?
Here.
Pfeiffer?
Here.
And Chairperson Wong?
Here. All right, has everyone had a chance to review the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Will you approve the agenda?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, agendas have been adopted. Now is the time of the agenda for the visitor presentation, but seeing as there's no one in the audience tonight, we will move past this one. At the item number five is approve previous minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the October 10th Planning Commission meeting?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Keyport, second by Pfeiffer. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. There's no consent items for tonight. And the action item is the public hearing for the 2040 comp plan.
Looks like we have a lively crowd, too, for that.
I mean, it's like playing at Wembley Stadium or something, you know?
Oh. All right, so the only item on the agenda tonight is looking at the 2040 comprehensive plan update. So in terms of a background on this subject, it's mandated by state statute and the Met Council to be adopted every 10 years or updated every 10 years. So this year, hence the movement from 2030 to 2040, we're looking at the update to the 2040 plan. So as a part of that, we have engaged Hoyzington Coagler Group Incorporated, HKGI, to assist us with developing this update. So we do have a representative here tonight to assist in any questions you may have. And we're very appreciative of their work and efforts helping us to this point. So in terms of some of the meetings and work sessions that we've held over the course of the year, we've had two Planning Commission work sessions in a public open house in conjunction with the Park Board conducted over the course of several months. So at this point, we're looking at kind of the full draft that we've been able to complete based on the comments and insight that was received from those work sessions in open house. So basically what we're looking at tonight, you know, we're seeing some updates in the projections and the numbers and some of the policies and land uses, but they are very much minor changes to the plan compared to the 2030 plan. And that's due in part to the work that was done with the Southwest Chaska Plan, the Downtown Master Plan, and the 2030 Plan. So everything tonight, we kind of foresee as some minor changes done to the overall plan. So the comprehensive plan guides the city in land use, transportation, environment, parks and trails, and other related topics related to the city. This is a general policy document that reflects the city's value system and philosophy and acts as an overall framework for our future here in the community. So again, it's very much a guiding tool. It's meant to be flexible and responsive to the changing conditions in the environment and economy and so forth. So it aids in developing policies, ordinances, and budgets for the future years. So some major accomplishments that we were able to achieve as a part of the 2030 comp plan was the Southwest Chaska Plan, which looked at the southwest portion of the city and the land uses and job creation and residential growth within that area. And that was adopted in 2016, so very, very recent was that plan put into effect. The Downtown Master Plan was also a major accomplishment of the 2030 comp plan. That, again, was a several-year process, which was formally adopted in 2012, looking at kind of the future land use and makeup of downtown Chaska. Another part which was also subsequent to the Downtown Master Plan and kind of the objectives and goals referenced within the Downtown Master Plan was putting together some downtown sign design guidelines, which were also completed only just recently in 2014. In reference to the Southwest Chaska Plan, comprehensive neighborhood planning was done as a result of that, which kind of looks at the residential growth and guidance for the Southwest Chaska area. So that was also accomplished and still being accomplished today. And then in terms of administering and utilizing the Downtown Master Plan in terms of its implementation, a couple blocks in downtown, Block 6, Fireman's Park, was done and completed in 2014, 2015, and then Block 53, which is the landing block on the south side of downtown as it abuts the Minnesota River for the landing project. So again, we're still looking at our Downtown Master Plan and utilizing that to get to other goals and objectives and redevelopment opportunities with the City Square West Project, so that's still a continuing goal and project being worked out. So some challenges that are still remaining and things that we're looking at as part of this 2040 comp plan is planning for a sustainable downtown with commercial and residential, and that's still true based on kind of the guidance of the Downtown Master Plan and our continuing efforts with redevelopment in the downtown area. Enhanced job creation, which is also in part to the Southwest Chaska Plan where we're denoting some areas that will be of great job impact in terms of creation of jobs in the business park areas. And just an overall look, we're still developing the Southwest Chaska area. We still have a lot of ground to cover in terms of the residential and a lot of the business park areas, so that is something that we will still continue to implement and move forward with as timing allows. The completion of the parks and trail systems, again, something that's still being worked on by our Park Board and continuing to make strides within that topic. Enhance opportunity for community building, so commitment to community and kind of what we reference in our implementation chapter of our comp plan is kind of those additional topics and pieces that we still want to look into and get greater information and analysis in terms of how to address some community topics. And then long-term transition from a developing to a developed community. So we are still very much a developing community, but there is going to be a point where we're going to be fully developed. So striving for that. So just want to kind of give an overview, a brief overview of some of the changes that are happening within the plan and specifically to the land use changes on the plan. So again, we're very much seeing a lot of minor changes with the recent adoption of the Southwest Chaska Plan. But one of those changes that came with the Southwest Chaska Plan that's being implemented or shown in the 2040 Plan is the extension of the Musa Line within the southwest area. So that line basically got extended to the south and to the west to accommodate that growth area. Another change that you'll see on the map is the Chaska Building Center site, which is essentially the vacant site next to the Cabinet Shop on Chaska Boulevard and west of Fire Lane. So the area between Cuzzi's and the Cabinet Shop changed from a commercial land use to a business park land use, which is consistent with what we went through during the Downtown Master Plan guidance. So that change was consistent with previous conversations, previous guidance for that site. There's an open space area that's south of Arbor Drive and north of Revo Circle. It's basically an agricultural piece smashing between residential and industrial. And that was basically changed from open space to industrial, which is consistent with some 1997 approvals for that area being industrial. So it just didn't get caught in the 2030 Plan, but as a part of the 2040 Plan, we're showing consistency with previous approvals done for that site. Another area was land south of Engler and west of Revo Row. There's basically a linear strip of land that's being changed from medium-density residential to high-density residential based on 2007 approvals for that site for an apartment complex on that site. So that was basically, again, in line with previous approvals.
Can I ask, isn't that under the High Line?
It is not, no. It's adjacent to it, but it's...
Where is it?
Um, I have to bring up a map. I think I have one at the end here. Of course, this doesn't give us a very zoomed-in approach.
Could be easier just to pull Google Maps.
Yeah, or I can see if I can...
Or if you've got a better landmark or something to tell me.
Yeah.
Oh, not that one.
Well, there we go.
No, that one's too far out. So essentially what we're looking at is this rectangular piece here on the south side of Engler Boulevard. So it's in between, well, it's just south of Brandon Dale, so it's kind of tucked into that open space and rolling hill fabric out there.
You say it's adjacent to the High Line?
Mm-hmm, correct.
We wouldn't build under the High Line, is that correct?
No, right. You wouldn't be allowed to, so...
It's very narrow.
Mm-hmm. It's a very narrow site, and most of it, based on the previous approvals, is being dedicated to the city for open space preservation. So it is very much half of kind of what you see on that land use map. So those were done in 2007. There may have been things that have changed in terms of utilities and so forth that would have to be reevaluated as a part of any development plan for this.
I'm sorry I interrupted you, but...
Nope, that's totally fine. If you have any questions along the way, feel free to stop me. And then there was a piece in the Clover Ridge neighborhood just north of the Twin Cities and Western Railroad and south of Pioneer Trail. Basically was changed from a low-density residential category to a medium-density residential and apartment category, which is consistent with 2,000 approvals in a concept that was done for that site. So again, these are coming from maps and plans and proposals that have previously been looked at at the city level. The land south of County Road 44 and east of Highway 212, basically the large general area of that changed its land use to be more specific, to show guidance for that future elementary school and community park, which is consistent with our Southwest Chaska Plan. So those were all basic land use changes that you would see on our land use map. As we get into the goals and policy changes through each chapter, I'm just going to kind of briefly go over those as well. But one of the major changes that you'll see formatted into each chapter is the fact that all of them now have specific goals for each of the chapters. None of them had goals in the past. It was merely just laying out some policies, but now it's specifically sanctioned off to show the goal of the chapter and the policies that reference back to that goal. So the first chapter that I kind of want to go over is the Natural and Environmental Resources Chapter, which is Chapter Three. So a couple new policies that were incorporated in there encourage the city businesses and residents to participate in renewable energy programs or install renewable energy systems. And secondly, promote and support energy-efficient building design and operations for both new and renovated buildings. So it did kind of downsize all of the changes that occurred within that chapter, but a couple to note that are important. In terms of Chapter Four, the land use chapter, there were several pieces that were added to this chapter. And this had to do with enhancing and expanding and better connecting to the Minnesota River Valley Open Space, which is on the south side of the city. Having a policy related to that. Expanding connections between Chaska's open space network and the Minnesota Landscape Arboretum on the north side. Strengthening the integration of and connections to the community's natural lakes, so Fireman's Park with the Clay Hole Lake there is kind of a project in itself that implemented that policy. So just putting that basically into terminology within the comp plan was important for us to look at other lakes and natural lakes that are within the city for the city to connect to via trails or bridges or other amenities for people to amenitize from those pieces. There were a couple policies related to residential land uses that were added. So one being integrating sidewalks and trails into residential neighborhoods that provide attractive, convenient, and safe connections to community destinations and regional trails. This is something that we've been implementing through the years, so it only made sense to reinforce that statement and goal or policy within the chapter. One specific policy that was added that's relevant to the Hazelton Golf Course in the corner of Pioneer Trail and Huntermark Road is reserving the land along the east side of Huntermark Road between Hazelton Boulevard and Pioneer Trail, which is guided for mixed residential, primarily for residential land uses at the northeast corner of that portion. But also integrating some neighborhood components such as commercial and office uses that are compatible with the adjacent residential. So this is coming from a concept plan that we looked at, I believe in 2013 for that site, so just putting that into kind of more of a substantial form in the comp plan in the form of a policy. There were some policies related to downtown land uses that were added. So again, increasing the street connectivity in downtown, maintaining the downtown street grid as a part of that was one of them. Creating highly attractive, convenient, and safe walking and bicycling environment in downtown, which has always been a push in that area to make things more safe and convenient for pedestrians who are traveling downtown. Also with the use of the Paseo concept, which has been a huge factor when we're looking at kind of the redevelopment of downtown, is that Paseo factor. So putting that into verbiage was important as part of this change. Promoting mixed use and higher-density redevelopment in the downtown core that will strengthen downtown as a place to live, work, and play. So again, that is kind of reinforced in some of the redevelopment catalyst sites that you'll see in our downtown master plan, but just converted here into the comp plan as well. Retaining and supporting expansion or relocation of public institutions within downtown to strengthen the downtown's role as the hub of community destinations and gathering places. So really capitalizing on those civic uses that are in downtown that really bring people in and really feed off of each other to bring more population into the city or into downtown. And again, kind of have them utilize the commercial component as well as a part of the people who come down for those civic uses. Allow professional service and office uses within existing residential structures located on the west side of Pine Street and east side of Walnut Street. So again, seeing where there's some flexible flexibility in those downtown buildings to, again, offer the best use and vitality for downtown. Moving on to Chapter Five for Housing, a couple policies were incorporated within that section. One of the newer ones is continuing to support existing neighborhoods and neighborhood associations with our housing improvement area financing opportunity, which has been a very successful implementation tool in existing housing within the city. So we wanted to highlight that specifically in our revitalization portion of the comp plan and capitalize on that. We also added a couple policies in regards to fair housing, so providing access to fair housing information in an accessible and visible manner for city residents, which we do currently and just wanted to restress that notion that we provide information here at City Hall for people who are looking for fair housing information. And lastly, ensure understanding of fair housing laws, policies, and implication by all city staff and departments who deal with housing. So again, being able to be a resource to people who are interested in this, in this topic. Moving on to Chapter Seven, which is the Parks, Trails, and Recreation and Open Space Chapter. So again, most of this was kind of dealt with at the Park Board level, but wanted to mention kind of the the changes that have occurred within that. So they did add a couple new policies within that in regards to developing and enhancing primary and secondary trailheads as defined and identified in the Chaska Wayfinding Master Plan, which is a newer implementation project that the Park Board and city has been working on. So looking at opportunities for wayfinding and creating convenient systems for pedestrians and bikers to utilize those systems. And then secondly, Chaska shall develop park and trail wayfinding signs as identified in that wayfinding master plan. So again, getting back to that master plan for trails and the wayfinding signs within that and putting that in our comp plan. And then lastly, our last chapter, which is the implementation chapter, which kind of talks about all of these different chapters and how are we going to implement kind of the goals and policies that are listed within that. This is the section where you would find that. So the newer changes to this, so all of the implementation pieces of each chapter were basically brought over to this chapter to show how they're going to be implemented. But a couple new pieces added to this chapter is a number of topics that have been brought up over time as pieces that the community has wanted to address and gets to that commitment to community notion that I mentioned earlier about areas where we can still improve. It gets back to a task force that was done in 2009, which highlighted a number of topics for the city to continue to look at. So these are topics that the comp plan does not solve by any means, but it references them and denotes them as areas for which we can continue to learn about how to address them. So the following topics related to that are senior-friendly communities, the youth inclusiveness, which relates to our minority populations and seeing an increase in population within that and how do we become more inclusive to them, homelessness, resiliency, and winter cities. So that's basically coming from that task force that was completed in 2009 and just, again, was put into the comp plan as some pieces that the city can continue to look at for future. So in terms of next steps of how this comp plan continues to move down the process line, so the City Council will basically have to approve the comp plan as a subsequent step to you guys recommending approval or denial of this. So that'll happen next Monday. Once that happens, then we are basically given the go-ahead to submit a draft to adjacent communities to review our plan and provide any comments on the plan during that time. And at the same time, we'll also be submitting our draft to the Met Council to get some initial feedback and review from them before we formally submit to them after a six-month period, which is scheduled for April of next year. So at this point, you know, we're still moving towards a final draft, which we'll have completed by April of next year, once we receive all the comments back from adjacent communities and the Met Council. So with that, tonight, we are asking you to make a motion to recommend approval of the 2040 comprehensive plan. I'm happy to answer any questions. We also have Jeff Miller here from HKGI to help answer questions, too. So hopefully not too many, based on the work sessions that we've done, but happy to answer any.
It's a lot of reading, but I do...
248 pages worth.
Yeah.
But in Chapter, Section Four, Chapter Four, whatever, there seem to be some new definitions that we hadn't had before as far as conservation residential. And places like, we used to have rural residential and so forth, but now there's new names and new definitions, and I'm I'm most curious about them. The new definitions. Most of the definitions are just fine. It's just the two newer ones.
Related to conservation residential?
One is conservation residential, and the other one is... No, it's the top, what's the first one?
Rural residential?
It is rural residential is still the top one, okay. Then it must be the next one, conservation residential. But the rural residential, there was really some changes about being able to put multi-story buildings and stuff like that. And it all seems like it's based on if you have sewer and water in that area, and... And I don't understand that that's going to happen. I've got to be reading the same thing.
Okay. Yeah, if you want to.
Yeah.
Come on.
So conservation residential, it's, it's not new to this update. It actually came into place as part of the development of the Cheval neighborhood. And I believe it was in there as part of that amendment. And so where it's on the map, I don't know if you can bring the map up, but the intent is that that would be residential, that would be allowed in the green belt. So that Cheval neighborhood, when that was developed, it's still in the green belt, but it's meeting the requirements of the green belt, which is one-third development, two-thirds open space.
Okay.
And then the, the developed residential is at a lower density, which needs to fit the requirements of that conservation residential land use. So it's not new to this update.
Okay, it's not new, I missed it in thirty. But what's, what was this multi-story thing, the jigger? That I'm trying to figure out what I was reading.
Well, the way, the way that that land use was developed when it was new was that it's meant to be flexible. And so somebody, a landowner could actually build something higher density than single-family residential, as long as they're meeting the overall low density of conservation residential. So if it was all, you know, like, I think, I'm not going to do any math, but if it was eighty percent, you know, more than the two-thirds percent open space and they could still do the density overall to be that low, that you could do something higher.
So that area will be in the Musa line eventually because I can't buy...
So, yeah, if you can pull up the Musa.
By 2040?
The, so the policies for the green belt, and this was part of that amendment when Cheval was going through its development process, the, if you go up to that north area, so Cheval is within the Musa, but the rest of that north Chaska area is not, and it's not planned to be. And the way the policy reads for the green belt is if land meets certain criteria, it has to be a certain minimum size of acreages. If that comes in and somebody wants to develop that, then they would need to also request an amendment to extend the Musa. So the Musa's not planned for the green belt areas that are not developed right now, but the ConPlan has policies in there saying that if someone wants to come in and request development in the green belt, then they would also have to request an amendment to the Musa line to get sewer and water out there.
Okay, and so Musa would have to decide if they were going to, I mean, it still is a step, you know, it's just...
Yeah, but Musa is Metropolitan Urban Services Area. It's really a decision of the city, working with the Met Council. So, you know, with Chaska's development being what it is now, you know, the green belt's really being surrounded by development, so the Met Council's not going to probably be opposed to it.
Okay.
It's really more of the decision of the city to say, we're willing to pay the cost of extending services out to this area that's going to be low density. So, you know, just history of Cheval, when Cheval came in, the intent was that it was not going to be in the Musa, it was not going to be on city water and sewer. And then as it was being developed, working with the city, there was a determination that, you know, the line was right there, maybe it would be better, it would be better environmentally maybe to have water and sewer go out there. And so that evolved, but the intent at the beginning was not for water and sewer to go into the green belt.
So to summarize the intent from a green belt perspective, is that in general, existing, existing sites of a certain acreage would not be enforced to be in the Musa line because we're trying to protect the environment and, you know, not do have, force any undue costs, right? But if there's a development, someone says, hey, you know, I want to build like a hundred homes in this, you know, big, you know, acreage of land, then it may make more sense, but it gives the flexibility for the city and Met Council to figure out, you know, maybe this does make sense in this case to make an amendment to the ConPlan in order to bring in Musa, the extended Musa line to bring in the water services, should that be appropriate?
Yeah, I think that the intent is to make a decision that the city can make that it's fiscally wise to extend sewer and water to those areas.
It's a city with some governance from Met Council, right? I mean, it's, Met Council doesn't make decisions, it's more of a governance of like, are you following process, are you doing the right things?
Yeah, I mean typically the Musa, if it's literally on the edge of development, then the Met Council would weigh in harder on whether they, they had the capacity to serve those areas or not. But in this case, I believe the Met Council would not be opposed to it. They, they don't, their intent is not to extend water and sewer to very low density development, so that would be their perspective on that.
I guess I'm very protective of the green zone.
Green belt?
Green belt, yes. And that's why I raised the question, because I didn't quite understand how you could have several buildings, several houses and so forth in a small area and, but as you say, if they have to be two-thirds?
Open space.
Yeah, there's a certain requirement where open space has to be preserved as a part of the development, to still kind of maintain that open character.
Yeah, and there is a green belt map in here, I don't know if you have a chance to look at that, but there's, there was a, there were some adjustments to the green belt as part of the Southwest Chaska project to the south, but there was no other change, there's no changes as part of this update.
Thank you for the explanation.
Other questions for Liz?
I have a question as well. In the chapter three, there's talk about environmental resource policies to encourage the adoption of solar for both residential and commercial, both new development and existing development, and the residential area at least. And I'm just wondering what, what shape that might take, that encouragement by the, by the city and through the ConPlan? Is that, you know, rebates through our electrical utility? Is that ordinance changes relative to implementing this kind of thing? What, any, has there been any thought on what that might look like?
Yep, and we currently do electrical rebates in our electrical department, but in terms of a land use standpoint, the first place we would have to start is looking at an ordinance creation as a part of that, because we really don't have anything in our code right now that talks about solar arrays or specific to renewable energy and how we kind of process that.
So adoption of this part of the ConPlan would probably lead us to develop some ordinances relative to solar.
Yep.
So that's, okay, good to know, good to know. And the other thing is, I don't see anything in the ConPlan that's inconsistent with what we're doing or what we're planning for City Square West or redevelopment of the library. In fact, it seems to me that those projects are very much consistent with the goals that are in the ConPlan. I just wanted to kind of point that out and throw that on the floor to see if, are there any issues that others see or inconsistencies there between what is swirling in the background right now and what this long-range vision looks like, so.
No, I mean, I think it, I think it fits with the idea of making it more, making the downtown area more vital. To me, it seems to fit very well with it.
Yeah, that was my sense as well, but again, I want to kind of point that out because we are in the middle of that stuff right now, so.
Well, the interesting thing is a lot of what's in the ConPlan was pulled in from the various documents from the Southwest Chaska plan, from the downtown master plan. So, you know, but, so one would, one would hope or expect that they would be consistent, yeah.
Okay, that's all I got.
Other questions? Only two.
Kind of covered a lot of stuff already.
It's a lot to read.
The pre-work was good.
So very good stuff. And I have to say, the, the winter cities to embrace winter is...
Yes, we noticed that.
I can't take credit for that verbiage or coining of words, but it was, yeah, pretty, pretty inventive.
You know, actually, one thing that did come to mind is just the wording, I wonder, around ensuring, understanding of fair housing. And I, can you pull that little part up? I wonder if we should just make it more about ensure, ensuring that we're providing necessary information so that everyone can understand, because I don't, maybe I'm being too technical with my verbiage, but you can't really ensure understanding, you can ensure that you are giving everything possible to help people understand. I don't know, I'm just wondering if it, if it should be a little bit more tactical in terms of what kinds of things we provide to help ensure understanding.
Is it more so related to that second point?
The third one, where it just says...
Or a third?
I mean, I, I mean, is this the, are you, does the verbiage in the actual thing say, you know, ensure understanding?
I think so.
I think it says ensure understanding. And you can't ensure understanding, you can ensure that we're providing all information so that they can gain an understanding, but you can't ensure an understanding.
So the third one's about understanding by staff and departments, so not...
I thought it had to do with providing materials, maybe we just say that then?
The second one is about providing materials, and then the third one is about ensuring understanding by staff and, or staff and departments.
Okay.
So the two separate.
Okay, so it should probably say of staff.
But it says it later in the paragraph, if you move that up to the front part of the paragraph, ensure understanding by the city staff of...
Okay.
That would be more specific.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Because I kind of read it the way you did the first time too, so.
Yeah, I'm like, oh yeah.
Yeah, just a little, a little background on that.
Okay, I guess the way I was looking at is ensuring the understanding, like you're making sure that all city staff ensure the understanding.
Perhaps a different way to approach it might be...
Ensure that other people understand it. Just, just the wording, I don't know if we can reword it, just to say that we will ensure that all city staff understand fair housing laws, yeah.
Yeah, I think we can, we can look at kind of the retweaking of words in that.
Or, or more, more succinctly, instead of ensure understanding or abiding by or, you know, something, you know, understanding's presubjective, one person's understanding's always different than another's.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe it's just about training, you know, making, ensuring that city staff is trained on these things or something to that effect.
That's it, there's also, there's more information further along in the actual body text too, that, that also describes intent as well too. So this is just like a sort of an introduction statement of what it is, so.
Right.
It's a summary statement, thank you.
We can revise that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Lot of good information here, including some good history as well of how we arrived where we are.
I'd like to make a motion that we recommend to the city council approval of the 2040 ConPlan.
I would second that.
So a motion by Dahlke, second by Keyport, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Wow, this thing's one of the shortest Mees we've had this year.
Wow, you guys.
One of them.
I wasn't expecting that.
Yeah, I'm not complaining. So let's see, the next thing here. And so off, next on the agenda is receive other meeting minutes, which we do, we don't need a motion for that, correct?
Nope.
And other business, Commissioner Pfeiffer, would you like to start?
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I can think of is just, you know, I've had people coming to me just to know that I'm on the Planning Commission with concerns about city council and how those new council members will be chosen. And I don't know if there's like some kind of plan for communications or I, I just know a lot of people are confused about how that happens and they're concerned about it. And so I just wanted to bring it up so that we are thinking about how we address it and how, you know, if there's a different way to do it or if we're doing it the right way and we just need to communicate it's the best way to do it or the only way to do it or whatever. I just know there's a lot of questions that are coming up around that. So I don't know if other people have had people bring it up, but it's definitely out there.
Yes, ditto. Ditto.
Anything else?
That's all.
Yep, that's it.
We had to have comments to Mr. Miller by Tuesday on our joint session. I'm just wondering if he has received comments and if everyone has put in their two cents worth, or does it make any sense, or is it too controversial, or whatever?
I guess they... You might need to speak into your microphone, sorry.
From what I've seen, we've received comments from about six people, I would say.
Out of all those people?
Yes, so feel free to encourage other people to comment.
So it's still, so even though officially it's actually passed, but you'd still would solicit feedback?
Yes.
You would still be willing to receive feedback even though official deadline's passed?
And I believe, well, the, it will not be on the November nineteenth city council meeting, I think it will be on the December third agenda.
That's good to know.
So, yeah, if there's anything you can or want to do to encourage more people to comment, that would be great.
Would it be, would it be possible to just have a, you know, at least a follow-up email from the staff just to remind people, you know? I think it's, you know, it's somewhat, you know, sometimes people get busy and forget things like that and do have the best of intentions, so it'd give people the benefit of the doubt. They felt like, you know, I mean, if someone missed it and said, shoot, that's it, and this done, but they realize, but maybe they can still get some comments in there that may be worthwhile, so.
I think also if you say we've only received six responses, that might light a fire to whoever hasn't done it to be like, oh, that's bad, I better do that.
Yeah, just to, by perspective, we've done a number of these surveys with the task force, which Commissioner Bovee knows, and the responses were almost a hundred percent every time, so.
And so that's why I didn't respond to the other one, because I've responded to many.
And Dan also too.
So from the group of you, if you exclude the task force members who have already been actively participating in that process, there was city council, planning commission, well, part, part of planning commission, because you're double, you don't want to double dip on that, right? And then...
HPC.
And Park Board, right?
An HPC.
HPC.
Yeah.
So that's, because Park Board is pretty big, HPC is quite a few people in it too, so there should be quite a lot more, I mean, it should be like at least like fifteen, twenty, maybe.
Yeah, but in addition, the chair of the Parks Board, no, not the chair, there's a Parks representative, there's an HPC representative.
Yep.
Two council members.
So it's like, you were talking about like at least, we should be getting at least like ten or so, or like ten to fifteen, somewhere around there.
Definitely more.
So we probably got like a little third of what we would expect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, just looking forward to the holiday season in Chaska, I always love that time of the year around there, downtown area and...
Yes, of the season, not the cold, the season.
Yeah, yeah, it can be.
And on a related note to that, I just wanted to highlight that, I know it seems like a million years away, but the tree lighting in Fireman's Park is scheduled for December second, Sunday, I think at six o'clock ceremony, so stay tuned to your social media for all the details as that gets rolled out, so.
It's becoming a bigger and bigger event. It's like the third year, right?
That we've done it.
That we've done it there, yes.
It's all great to have it.
Yeah.
It's very cool.
It's something special, though.
That's all I have.
I have nothing. I don't have anything either.
Anything else? Okay. And I don't have anything tonight. So we have a motion to adjourn?
I so move.
On second?
Motion by Cross, second by Dahlke. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.